One, ready?
We're ready.
One, two.
All right. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. We'll get right into it. We have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is the budget presentation. Turn over to Kathy Mader.
So, the budget development continues. The BOSI's commitment forms were released late last week, so I'm working with administrators to firm up special education, technology, CTE, PTEC, and other service requests. Negotiations are ongoing with administrators and a few ancillary staff that have employment agreements expiring on June 30th. At this point, no additional staff have been added to the budget. The transportation budget is a work in process, progress. BOSI's administration is assisting in the projections for bus parts, software, and other related transportation costs, not related to personnel, as they have the historical data to rely on. I am hopeful that the cost to provide our own transportation services will be less than the BOSI's cost. Since we have hired seventeen drivers, there should be no need to contract with outside agencies to provide transportation services for our scholars who attend programs in private settings or McKinney-Vento population. On the revenue side, the tax cap is 1.95 percent, or $354,372. Preliminary state aid figures from the governor's office show an increase of just over $2 million. However, this will likely decrease as corrections to the district's enrollment data have been made since these numbers were released. I'm hopeful that at the April meeting, we will have a state budget so that aid figures can be finalized prior to adopting the 24-25 budget. On another note, nominating petitions are available for anyone interested in running for the school board. Candidates need signatures from one hundred eligible voters and must be turned in by 5:00 PM on Wednesday, May 1st. There are currently three vacancies for terms running July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Petitions may be picked up in the business office weekdays between 7:30 and 3:30. Thank you. Any questions?
If you repeat that.
What are you just saying? Don't be like that.
Next presentation, we have a capital project update. Turn over to Turner, CSR.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
We'll run through an update quick. We'll start with the capital project, and then we'll go through the federal-funded project. So if you look through the packet, all the elementary schools, all of the secure vestibules are pretty much complete. You can see some of the finished wood panels going on the vestibule window wall side. Those are just getting bumped up over the last couple of breaks. Still got some punchless things to do in there, odds and ends, but the secure vestibules at the elementary schools are pretty much done. Working through into the middle school, we got the center rails up around the old benched areas in the middle of the school, so those rails are up. They just need to get painted. They'll paint those out and the moving columns up there out of match. Carpet's down up there, looking good. Over at Park Terrace, down at Husky, through the capital project, we did some updates to the concession stand. You can see the picture there. Siding is up, doors and frames are in. We do have a little bit more of the FRP panels to go into the two bathrooms that we built out in there, but all the plumbing is done, electrical's done. A lot of electrical stuff has moved around and kind of better secured in the back of the building, so a lot of, lot of good work on that concession stand to kind of tighten it up and really freshen it up. Moving through, the big work happening now for the capital is over at Miko. So Miko's roof has been replaced, the decking, structural decking has been replaced and put back. As you can see, we're into finishes. Case work's going, going in, couple odds and ends left with that, couple pieces came in. Ceiling needs to be put back together. You can see some of the wall panels going up. Those are not complete yet. They will be complete in the next couple of weeks. And then we have the doors, frames, and hardware going in to create that secure vestibule, and that'll be buttoned up there. The next two big things for the capital project are the main offices here and the main office at the high school. We'll start doing a lot of prep work nights here in the next couple of months, and then do the major overhaul demo when we work over the summer. That's really the capital project. Just run through the federal, and if you can go through any questions. Sorry to make you go back in here, but over at Kingsborough, so Kingsborough is the one building with the federal funds that is getting fully. We have, so all of those ceilings have come down, a lot of the ductwork is up in the sky. We do have ductwork going in every night. The roofers are there, starting to cut in a lot of our curbs. The plan is, over the April break, to set all the rooftop units on the roof, and then hopefully shortly thereafter, once the weather turns for us, we can start to remove the existing heating systems so that we can put everything back together, get the ceiling back in and do all that, and get that moving. Over at Boulevard, similar scenario where all the ceilings are down in the areas that we are working. This is just limited areas on the second floor, as well as the first floor, south-facing rooms over by the playground. Ceilings are down, ductwork's going up as we speak. Roofers are there as well over the next couple of weeks. And again, we're hoping that over April break, to have all our steel and roofwork complete so that we can set the rooftop units up there and continue working. Park Terrace, again, similar scenario. A lot of those ceilings are now down, structures do is going up, and again, working to get all that work complete over the next few weeks so that, over April break, we can set the rooftop units there and kind of walk away from that week with all our mechanical units up in the sky.
Bob, could you just pause there? Could you kind of walk the board through a little bit of the search we made, I guess I made, on the second story of Park Terrace, that we did remove that secondary ceiling that you see in that photograph?
Yep. Yep, so you can see in that picture, about half of the building over at Park Terrace, the classrooms, had a old plaster ceiling with one-by-one tiles glued to it. That's about two feet higher than what the new ceiling that was installed there was. So as we took down that new ceiling, we brought Dave and Chad and the team and looked at it and just kind of went over the pros and cons of trying to do the right thing and take both ceilings down and leave that a wide open space. The amount of work and time that would have to go into doing that was just not feasible, especially with, if you remembered, a lot, all this work for this federal-funded project has to be done in September of '24 for us to get the funding back from the federal government. So that's why a lot of this work is rushed throughout the school year, so it can be done this summer and get that full, full federal dollars back. So it just, it didn't make sense to tie in money to take that second ceiling down. Any place that we saw, there were some things that were also done, electrical issues, other things like that that weren't how they should be. So those will all be fixed, repaired, be cleaning up, organizing the wires, kind of making it not look like such a bowl of spaghetti up there and really cleaning it up to make it as clean as we can, but again, without getting too crazy and spending too much money.
That one photograph you can see, I think that's, I got my attention. Sitting in my office there talking about, I was like, yeah, yank it out. I guess I shouldn't have done, when they put the drop ceiling in, they brought me over there, I saw how many penetrations are already in that ceiling. Shouldn't be going around so many utilities and the time crunch, the cost for vestibles. It didn't make sense, so we said, well, do what you gotta do, make the penetration where you need to, but leave that old ceiling intact. So that's probably why previous boards of education and administration made decisions to leave that there at that time, so we're in the same boat. Sorry, it didn't seem like the juice is worth the cream.
Agreed. And like I said, any other work that we can do to make right, to make up the code, up the current standards, we'll do that before we put the second ceiling back up. That's really the gist of it. And then over at the high school, we, we'll be working in the one science room that gets AC. We haven't started in there yet, but that'll be coming here pretty quickly. And we do have the units up in the second floor, which gets the foam booth style units that you can see in one of the pictures at Boulevard. All the rooms on the second story of the high school get those same units. Those are sitting in place. We're just working on getting some movers, take the windows off, put the exterior movers in there so that we can start to install those and get those moving.
So, that's not quite that, so you may have heard about it, the second, that high school picture, that losing a larger refrigerator, a freezer, that's a new unit for heating and cooling, and we're gonna lose one window, correct?
Correct.
And heat room on that second floor for that space. So, they're larger than maybe we want, but they are both heating and cooling.
Heating, cooling, and all your outside air, so you get all your exchanges, you know.
It's gonna be far more efficient than what we're turning it down.
Far more efficient, yep.
So, you know, the bad, bad part is, I guess you'd say the classroom loses a four-by-four space, is not accurate.
Um, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a little less than that, but about that. And then the old UV, which you see typically in classrooms now, is a vertical one along the window wall, so those will obviously be removed, so they'll gain a little bit of that space back, but then lose the corner. And that unit will be, it's not in its permanent home right there, it will be tucked, kind of neared into the corner, and then ductwork comes off of the top and across to feed the space.
So that's something, when we put those in the high school over Christmas break, I think they were kind of like, they were shocked from the teachers, a lot of them were big. So it is what it is. We saw, yeah, they're a good size for sure, but they became smaller and they're efficient. We've been on smaller, but it is what it is. Mike, that's correct?
That's correct. They'll be happy when they got AC in the, in the summer.
Kind of like Bob said, you know, those, those four zone units under the windows are coming out, so they, whatever space they're losing for that new piece, they will be brought to get back the same square footage for storage space and things like that. Is there something that we can have painted, like, maybe have some of the art students come in and paint it so it looks like a foam booth?
Sure. Do whatever you want.
Have you ever seen a foam booth? Oh, yeah. He's gonna go to a foam booth there. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Oh, you know, a second question. Did we ever get the door situation fixed on the front at Boulevard? That thing was sticking pretty bad.
The exterior door that?
We're going into the new doors, the vestibule.
Going from the exterior into the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, unfortunately, we're adjusting those pretty, when they hold them open all day for kids to come in, it stretches the closer out. We have the new automatic closers because we have the handicap button, so we just need to keep adjusting it as we see, as they come up. But yeah, just, holding those doors open is not what they want to do, those closers being held open for, you know, a half an hour, whatever it is in the morning, when they let the kids in, they get stretched out and they just need to be readjusted. But I think we can find a happy medium where they can still leave the doors open, because obviously they need that to get kids in and out of the building, but have to adjust it so it doesn't have to be readjusted every day. But we've definitely had them back there, and they'll continue to come back until it's right.
Is that something Chad, Skiffy, have to do?
What's that? Yes, Skiff knows how to do it, and it's pain in the butt to get up into that mechanical system up there, but they, they know how to do it.
It's almost like you gotta use the button. Those things are like, I went to McNabb last couple of weeks ago for some training.
The doors are, yeah, because they have that automatic closer, they do have a little if they're not.
Barely a problem.
Yep.
Well, they're secure.
Yeah. We're trying to find that balance of security.
That's their goal.
Yes.
Nothing else about the high school? About the signs here, the, the school and high school?
Yes, we just actually worked with Kathy today to get out to the sign manufacturer. They should, it might take a little longer, they're coming from China, apparently they can't come through the Red Sea right now, so we gotta go around, but they said about a month it'll be to get here to get the parts here.
And we are getting, I think I told the board, larger, more up-to-date, state-of-the-art panels?
Yep, with the proper surge protection for any kind of electrical.
Is there a orgy?
Yes.
What did we say, September month, is there a drop dead date?
You gave me a drop dead date of September, I'm hoping to beat that by as much as possible.
Overall, again, I think I've spent this sooner time, but Bob said he'd been a pleasure to work with, and Mike, of course, and I think the product's going well. I think we'll be looking at that wish list at some point and prioritize it.
Definitely.
Hopefully, they like to honor promises, all we deliver, and hopefully they're gonna be on track to do that again. The CSR's staircase.
Thank you guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Next presentation is from the social studies department, Mr. Bromley, Ms. Lambert. Want to use that? You'd have to plug it up here if you wanted.
Oh, I thought the slides were.
They do all have copies of your slides.
Oh, okay, then.
Want to just skip the slideshow? Unless you had videos that you wanted to do.
What?
If you wanted, if there was a bad video, I'd love to see if there was.
All right, well, hello, everyone. I'm Danielle Lambert, Department Chair of the Middle School Social Studies Department. The second slide, you can see the names of our members. The social study is, begins in sixth grade with a spiral progression that starts with ancient cultures, then in seventh dives into early American history, and then everything after the Civil War in eighth grade, and then it spirals through high school, and those topics get covered again. The middle school can set a foundation for high school success by being really deliberate in not only the content that we teach and covering all the things we need to cover, but also in the skills we nurture in our students. That comes down to vertical articulation, and so what we do is we back-engineer the global and US history exams, and we keep going back to see what are the skills that the kids will need to be successful on that, and then we try incorporating them early on through sixth, seventh, and eighth, so that they're building those skills and it's not new when they're coming to take the test. So we're focusing on content and skills for high school success. In recent years, we've identified the key concepts that show up on the Regents, especially in the constructive response questions, and we've been working to make it so that we use them more frequently in class. This year, Jay Jarabek, we've been working with him a lot, the data that he can help us with, to help us progress in a, in a more consistent way, in a more thoughtful way towards our goals. So if you look at slide eight, you'll see that we've been slightly improving on the constructive response questions on the global and on the US history, and our goal is to have that continue to climb higher and higher. So what we did this past year is, we decided as a department to choose a different skill and discuss it in our department meeting, then, then, then teach classes that following month utilizing that skill, come back together and discuss how that went, and then choose another skill and move forward and teach each other the ways that we did it, so that we're being really conscious about moving our skills development forward. If you see on slide 10, those are the concepts that we've been specifically targeting, and they are all concepts that are specifically assessed in the Regents exams. We're not teaching to the Regents. We're teaching our eighth grade, seventh grade, or sixth grade content, but we're doing it in such a way that we're building the skills that they need to be successful when they leave us and they go up into the high school. This fall, we developed as a department an assessment where we wanted to look at how well the kids grasp those important concepts, and if we could show, now that we're all inspired by Jay's data, if we could show the, the way in which their understanding of the concept progresses over, progresses over time. So, if you look at slide 12, you can see that we broke it down by the different key concepts, and you can see that between sixth, seventh, and eighth, they do grow in understanding, and that was the first nice piece of data we got. The second piece of data was which concepts do they struggle with the most. So clearly, historical context was something they struggled with, the concept of significance. Strangely enough, the concept of similarity was not so easy, which we didn't expect, and we did expect geographic context to be difficult, and we know we need to work more on that. This data helps us be clear on which concepts need more attention, and it also helps us gauge whether our efforts are producing progress, and it gives us two years before the students are expected to take any Regents exam to work on, on the different skills that they need, need to hone. These are also excellent skills for any thing that you're learning, right? Cause and effect, bias, historical circumstances. These are not things that are specifically for a Regents exam, these are life skills. So it's nice to be able to, to focus on, specifically on teaching them through our content. If you look at slide 14, you'll see that another thing we did with Jay's data was look to see which topics, which content area topics, the kids struggled with the most when taking either of the two Regents', and we came up with that list. So we've looked at that and seen, you know, what, what do we cover in sixth, seventh, and eighth of those topics that we can focus more on and help the high school out a bit? And then our writing program continues. We have an exit essay, a six paragraph exit essay, which is modeled on the global Regents' enduring issues exam essay, and we expect them to be able to have familiarity and comfort with that six paragraph essay at the end of eighth grade, so that the, the ninth grade teachers know exactly what the kids have been exposed to, and they can pick up right where we leave off in June. Okay? Let's see, our next steps, Jess Northman and I will be attending the state conference this Thursday and Friday, and we're going to be attending a stimulus-based style questioning workshop for writing Regents exam questions, so we'll take that in order to hopefully do summer work where we can work on continuing to take our own assessments and sprinkling in questions that are really built on the types of questions they'll see on those exams in 10th grade. Okay? And slide 17, thank you to Jay Jarabek for all the work he's been doing with us, and we're really proud of our vertical articulation and really happy that we can not just be, you know, doing it hoping that we hit the topics and hoping that we hit the skills, but really being conscious about hitting the skills. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Arthur Bromley, I'm the Social Studies High School Department Chair. I just, I have, if you have, does everybody have my hand out? I just have a, just a brief overview of our department, our members, just what our goals are. I just want to give some information about the courses that we offer, and then just a little bit of data on how well we're doing at the high school for the last couple of years, so. But if you look at the department members, just a quick run-through of who's on our staff. We're down to seven members now, and we have some, some new faces in the department. So Henry Best is, he's, it's, he's in his second year with us, and he's teaching seniors, he does PIG and Econ, and he's really doing a great job, the seniors love him, right? Danielle Freeburn, she's in our first year with us, she's teaching five Global Nine classes. She's doing a fantastic job, like, that's not an easy task that we gave her this year. I think she's doing great so far. Then we have our veterans. Kevin Kremler has taken on a lot of new classes. We have social citizenship that we're offering this year. It's tied to the, the seal of civic literacy. And so we're trying to help the kids achieve that seal from New York State through that social citizenship class that Kevin's teaching. He's also taken on a new Supa course this year, he's doing Supa sociology. You see Dave Rogers and Mark Schneider are stalwarts of our department. You know, they do four or five, like, Dave does four or five Global Tens for the last couple of years, has done a great job. Mark's done four or five US history for the last couple of years, done a great job with the students. Steve Turpleck and other veterans, really versatile. Steve's taken on AP psych for us. He started Supa personal finance this year, which is a great course, and he's also teaching honors Global Nine. So just a quick rundown of the department there. As far as our goals, it, I feel like the goals from year to year stay the same. You know, the first goal, provide instruction that allows Glover'sville High School scholars to pass required courses needed for graduation. New York State requires that students pass four years of social studies. So the courses that we teach are, it's really important that the students pass, right? If, if a student fails Global Nine or, or US History 11, or even PIG or Econ, like, their lives get very difficult quickly. So we try to really work hard to get as many students to pass these courses as we can while maintaining high standards in instruction. Number two, we really want to provide instruction that allows students to be successful on global and US history Regents. Again, those are requirements for graduation, they're, they're important for students' academic careers, which is a focus of our department. And the last goal that we have is just to maintain a wide, above and beyond the core courses, just offer lots of learning opportunities for the kids. And if you, you take a look at the list of courses, like, you just go down to the next section, there are the list of courses that we offer. Yes, we have to teach Global Nine, Global Ten, US History, but we offer a wide variety of advanced college-level courses and elective courses that people have worked really hard to develop. I don't know if I, I don't think I have to read all that, I just want people to see that the, we really worked hard to, to offer a program that has a lot of learning opportunities for the students. And then the last page, just a, just a quick snapshot, just keep, there's a lot, just keep the data simple, I thought. With, you can see the scores that we have in Glover'sville's in gray, how we scored on the global and US history Regents exams, and like, just next to I have how New York State has scored. And I think you see we're close to, that's how, how, how the students across New York State have scored on Regents exams. We're very, very close to that mark, so we're, we're really proud of the program that we've developed that allows students to be successful on these exams, the things that Ms. Lambert has talked about, building it up from the, the middle school and working on those skills. We have a program that goes all the way through high school. I, I think you see in the data that there's been a lot of success here in the social studies department, so I, right now, I think we're in a very good spot. If anybody has any questions, of course.
I have a second one question. Is there any consideration in time invested in ensuring continuity and fluency between quarter grades and performance on Regents exams?
Well, it's just, yeah, yes and no in the sense that the, the skills that are required on the, the Global Ten Regents exam are not exactly the same as the US History Regents exam.
I mean, if a student found out he was in Global Ten and you say he or she's scoring 85, 90 percent each quarter, also they get a sixth in the Regents. So that's, the false sense of ability is what I'm, I'm getting at doing. We put time in conversation about ensuring that we're not sending our students up for failure, because they're like, well, you know, well, I made these five social studies, also you run into a BoSaw on June 18th, and you did pass the Regents.
That's a good question. I, I think across the board, if you talk to the teachers that teach the Regents courses in the high school, we try very hard to make our assessments reflect what's on those state assessments. A lot of my questions that I give on my exams are from old Regents exams. The essays that I have the students write are modeled on New York State essays, or sometimes I copy old essays from Regents exams, so I try to say to students, ask me this, you know, I talk to about the students, if, I, I try to make my course, set up my course, if you're doing well on my test, that's going to reflect on how well you're going to do on a Regents exam. I think we try really hard to make our assessments, unit assessments, we have midterms, there are Regents level questions that we try to make.
That's good. I think it's important.
I do too.
I teach Global Ten, US History, and I think it's really important to make sure the students know where they are, and they give time in the school year to not be overly reliant on homework, participation grades, or projects for their grades. At the end of the day, they need to pass that assessment, so the quarterly grades should be somewhat assessing or using Regents questions. Thanks for having me. Yes?
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
See my keyboard warriors didn't show up. All right, move on to the board discussion. We have the Board of Education minutes from the February 5th meeting. Any questions or comments on those? Motion to approve? Vinnie, seconded by Heath. Ball of favor on those? Anybody have anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, move on to the next item, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Before I get into my report, just want to point out a few things on tonight's agenda. One is a donation from Buck's Pizza for roughly 50 unused pizza boxes, and he's thinking, what are those you going to be used for? They're going to be used for a third grade math project. So we appreciate Buck's Pizza's generosity, and I'm not sure how they're going to be incorporated, but it sounds interesting. We appreciate Buck's generosity. Also, we have two retirements for two long-serving people. One, David Dodge, a teaching assistant at Boulevard, most recently, 16 years of service, and a staple in the high school for 33 years. High school secretary, Secretary Carol Rockefeller's retiring, so a lot of institutional knowledge going out the door with Carol, but wish her well. Both her and David, wish them a long, healthy, happy retirement. Few things we want to jump into. One, just an update, the attendance, work that we've been doing, last board meeting, I spent a lot of time talking about attendance. The newspaper wrote an article about our chronic absenteeism, which is, continues to be an issue. I met today with our community officer, Jim Carter, and elementary community outreach coordinator, LaShawn Hawkins, who are working on the board that's behind the Board of Education over here. It's a map of the city, and they're using colored pens to identify neighborhoods of our chronically absent scholars. We're not complete yet, but I put that up there to see what we're working on. We hope that a problem well-defined is a problem half-solved, and if we know the neighborhoods that our scholars are chronically missing school, where they're from, that can lead to maybe better decision-making in our work with the city, creating city bus stops, or even running our own buses as we have been this school year. So we hope to glean some information from this. I'm not happy to report that they told me today that in about three and a half weeks ago, our chronic absenteeism. that in about three and a half weeks ago, our chronic absentee rate, those scholars who were over eighteen absences was at roughly two ninety-five and now we are over five hundred. So three weeks later, you can add another two hundred and five scholars to that chronic absentee number, that twenty percent approximately of our entire student population with four months, four months ago in school has already reached that threshold. Can't stress regular attendance, the importance of regular attendance enough. We spend a lot of time talking about academics and, and curriculum and data to improve the instruction. If the scholars aren't here on a regular basis, for twenty percent of them, that's a heavy lift. You got to be here to learn. That's just.
You guys split the mildest winter in recent history.
The mildest winter in recent history. There's been a lot of sickness this year. I'll, I'll, I'll give that. But as I said in the newspaper article, sickness does not account for the absenteeism we're seeing. It's apathy. And if it's inability to get to school, we're going to do our best on our end to try to meet that need. The vast majority of our scholars live in the city of Glover'sville. We are doing our best to create neighborhood pickups for people. Chris and I met with the P, new PTA leadership. We talked to them about spearheading an effort maybe to put parents in various neighborhoods together where they can possibly carpool. The district can't be the linchpin or the, the lead agency on such an effort for liability purposes. But if parents working through social media can collaborate and cooperate and come up with a way to carpool to get kids to school, we're all for it. So the new leadership, very excited about what they're bringing to the table. They seem very motivated and genuinely interested in up, in lifting up all the scholars. So excited to work with them moving forward. So I'm, you know, the work that we're doing, I just, I brought that map out to show the board. It's not complete. It still lacks a couple of our buildings, but it already starts to tell the tale of where some of our hotspots are for chronic absenteeism. One other thing that I want to do a deeper dive on, it came up in our brainstorming session today with staff, is when I first came to Glover'sville, I knew that we had our two element, our two primary buildings. Initially, I saw the, the breakdown of what divides Park Terrace Scholars from Kingsborough Scholars and where they live. I think we need to be nimble about that. I think we need to look at it on a year-to-year basis and ensure, we have students, say, who live down on Lexington Avenue who attend Kingsborough. Pretty sure Park Terrace is quite a bit closer to Lexington Ave than, than Kingsborough is. So I think it's something we need to revisit. I'll take responsibility for not having this conversation sooner, but frankly, it hasn't been on top of my priority list. But I don't know, maybe some of you know when that, how that decision was made to divide the city between those two primary buildings. But I think we need to be nimble and possibly look at it on a year-to-year basis as to where those lines need to be drawn to ensure consistent class sizes in the two buildings and to maximize our staffing. And also to hopefully meet the needs of the community at large to ensure they're as close to their primary building as possible.
That was many years ago. Did you have, do you have a date by chance on San Diego McNab, like when McNab was converted to Saint?
Whatever I saw was when McNab closed, MECO closed and, and Boulevard became a three-five building. So there, there is a dividing line. I remember looking at it and being like, God, does that make a lot of sense?
Anybody that went to McNab or MECO then went to Kingsborough was your home base.
Right.
In terms of the great selection.
But it was a little bit more fuzzier than that.
But it doesn't make sense.
I think we need to do a deeper dive on that.
And once you have a bunch of kids that were going to Boulevard and middle school, so it was more turned into a convenience thing for some people. It was, it was a, it was a nice show.
Was your question, when did the district switch from the grade level grouping to what we have now?
That was roughly twenty seventeen?
That was a long time ago.
No, it was, it was, it was dressed before I got here. It's a year, yeah, literally a year, seven years ago?
That was, that was the last class. They're, they're the last class to have neighborhood schools right there.
About seven years ago?
Yeah, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. So I, I think it's important that we take a deep, deeper dive on it and be happy. Any board members wanting to sit on that? I welcome. I think it's important that the board actually take part in that process, to look at it, look at our numbers of who's attending what schools and see if there's some sort of delineation that makes more sense in a current practice. And maybe it's something on a year-to-year basis, we, we make it a practice to look at it and see if it should be tweaked this way or that. Kind of like gerrymandering congressional boundaries. We'll get a, what do they call that, a bipartisan commission to do it.
Dave, are, are students being interviewed who have this chronic absenteeism? Are they being spoken to by counselors and trying to determine what reasons they're giving?
I think that's a great question. I, I would defer to the administration. I'm guessing they're having a conversation on a daily basis with our chronically absent scholars, but as a formal, I'd say, survey to parents and scholars, we have not done that. Anybody want to elaborate?
Um, I think that, so any of our chronically absent scholars are identified. So Mr. Carter provides us a weekly list of who's reaching different thresholds and based on where they are, kind of changes the way we respond. So right now, at the high school, we're targeting those kids that are roughly ten days prior to them hitting that chronically absent threshold. We go to their houses. We ask them if there's something that we can provide them. You know, do you have everything to meet at home? Or say they come back on campus, we try to meet with their counselor, with them, have those conversations. But more often than not, we're out at their houses trying to reengage them with school. Because a lot of the kids that you're hearing about have extended absences for a very long period of time. So the only way to get to them is to go to their homes.
How's our partnership with DA been on this venture?
I honestly, I, I would love to see more families held accountable for educational neglect. So I, I, you know, I'm not in that end of it. So it's not my place to say that they should be doing a better job. But, you know, I think last year there might have been three families that were held accountable for ed neglect. We could have two hundred. So I.
They're mandated to report that, though.
Yeah. Educational neglect is something, as a standalone issue, CPS, DSS is really not, they, they need to prioritize. And educational neglect in and of itself is something that they really don't act upon because of their short, short staff or, and because of the other myriad of issues they run into. If it's ed neglect and, you know, suspected abuse or something like that.
Yeah, are they really prioritizing? Really?
So I'm just telling you what I'm told. It's, it's an uphill battle. You know, I think I said in that article that governmental agencies inability to properly intervene in the lives of kids is causing a, a generational problem in this country. This isn't a Glover'sville issue. This is a nationwide crisis that doesn't get talked about nearly enough in the halls of US Congress or in major media outlets. I could go on and on, but I won't. Vinnie likes to keep it short. But it's a problem. It's, as I said, the fact that we have twenty percent of our population already at chronically absent numbers. When I said forty percent was on track to be chronically absent, you know, I said that three weeks ago, forty percent. So obviously that number has probably gone up because we now have, you know, if it's at five hundred, that's just a quick snapshot. I think that's about twenty percent of our population, give or take, that has already reached that chronically absent number. So it's a real problem. I wish our partner agencies in the state of New York were properly funded and charged and supported to do the work that's necessary to get these children in schools. Because without a, in, in education, their lives are going to be very difficult. Leads to all of the isms and, and problems that you hear about in society. When if you don't have a solid foundation, your life's going to be hard. I frankly believe a free public education is something that every child deserves and they need to be here to learn. Can't be an option for people to, you know, compulsory education, enforce the laws on the books. Kids supposed to be in school age six to sixteen without excuse. Make it happen. That's, that's what I believe. Number two, violence in the workplace update. So I think you're aware of the law. It's been in place for a while, but public schools were just brought into compliance this year, this calendar year, twenty twenty-four. We're part of a, a BOSI's co-ser, working with a company who actually is the owner of our, the Tap app. They did a assessment of all of our campuses last week. They'll be sending us a survey to send to staff about, this is really about the safety of staff. Safety from other staff, safety from students, safety from the public. They do assessments on things that we've done all along since we've had Mike Etherton really here to ensure that the district is as safe as possible and secure. So the gentleman said that we are actually in far better shape than the vast majority of the districts they work with. But there's some compliance pieces. We will get the unions involved. Once we have that survey information, we'll bring the union leadership together with us to look at the data and formulate our safety plans moving forward. But I think it's something that each building, we can do a better job of ensuring all those who are on our SAVE committees are, are informed and trained to act appropriately in a crisis situation. So I'm pretty happy where we are in regards to that. We did accept the policy in February. So we should be in good shape. Earlier today, Chris and I met for our second brainstorming session with staff. It lasted about an hour and fifteen minutes. Some of the topics that were discussed, I really enjoy these conversations. I think Chris does as well. We had about thirty staff members. Secondary earth science and possibly tweaking sequence was one of the topics that was brought up. They're asking for maybe an intro to science course, non-regents course for some struggling scholars, possibly special education students. I thought it made sense. So Chris and I will certainly do a, do a deeper dive with our administrative team on that. Another concern was our current SBST referral process, primarily in the elementary level. Some staff members felt like they're, they weren't informed as well as they could or should be on that. So again, I think that's something that we could do a, a deeper dive on and, and help our staff feel like they know. I kind of feel like our staff should be able to give a watercooler speech about this is how Glover'sville goes about determining who and who is not going to be referred to, say, CSE for testing. They think there, some people think there's a quota, like, oh, we can't refer more than X number of kids to CSE for testing. That's certainly not the way it works. But there's a lot of misinformation out there about the process and I think we can do a better job of bringing them into the fold and understand it better. Middle school bell schedule was brought up. Apparently the bells don't, I didn't ask Bob that. Could have put Bob on the spot. The bell schedule doesn't match with our clocks. No middle school folks here. Class sizes in the primary buildings, that was brought up. I don't know if that's something that our administration's aware of. But that kind of led to the conversation about the city mapping. Dismissal procedures in our two primary buildings was a concern that was brought up. They kind of feel like it's still chaotic. So that's something we'll work with our team to try to improve upon. Parent access to classrooms to make a more welcoming environment. They said that they feel like since COVID, we have not been as welcoming as we had been in previous years. So again, these are great topics that we're to hear directly from the rank and file that will kind of lead to, help us determine priorities from within the organization. And none of these topics seem frivolous to me, but they're all worth a deeper dive. And the last was get a refresh training on our trauma care kits. So again, that's another good point that's brought up. People haven't been trained in three or four years and they thought getting refresher training would be prudent. And we agree. You captured most of that, Chris?
Yes.
Any questions on our, I, this brainstorming session is something we just started this year. I like it. You know, I intentionally asked the administration not to take part in it because we want our people to have direct access to me and Chris without feeling like, oh, I'm going to step on somebody's toes if I have a concern. We meet with our admin group frequently. So certainly, they certainly have direct access to Chris and I to talk about, Chris and me, to talk about any issues or solutions that they may have. But to be able to bring the staff in, hear directly from them, I think it's a great practice that we'll continue doing years ahead. Any questions, concerns? I think somebody, a board member might have asked about that too.
Heath did ask.
Who Heath asked? So I said no to Heath too. Sorry. So obviously, it's not because we don't value your opinion. That's the furthest thing from it. But we want our staff to feel as comfortable as possible raising anything as long as it's not a personnel issue or a union-related issue. So far, they've been great. This is some good news. So I met with Vince DeSantis last week and some representatives from the Environmental Protection Agency in Washington DC. They think that we are a great candidate, the city of Glover'sville, and working in partnership with the school for a significant grant to reimagine Lincoln Street, to tear down that factory, the old Coligo Building. And they would remove the DPW across the street as well. And they would want to install, obviously, to, you know, modernize and freshen up the, the riverfront, but also to create a community center. And they want it to really be a nexus with the school and the community. So we're talking about a before-school program and after-school program for K-12, possibly a tutoring center, adult literacy, career exploration, preparation programs, some kind of physical fitness component, outdoor green spaces. Sounds great?
Sounds fantastic.
Sounds awesome. Yeah, and it's, you know.
Good location, too.
That corridor to our middle school, high school campus has been an eyesore for, really, back when I was a student here. That factory was in the same exact condition it is now. Maybe it looked a little better, but not much. So to see that space reimagined, I'll be emailing the staff to, to get, to elicit ideas of what that space could be used for. And Vince has a grant writer. He's pretty motivated. He wants me and Chris and whoever else wants to be part of it. If any board members want to be part of this project, I think your representation would be great to have on it. Pretty exciting stuff, though. If we can somehow prove that corridor and really link the city to our middle school, high school campus with a beautiful avenue with a, a, a center that serves a community and especially the young people in this community, it's a win-win situation.
Do you want to get a lock on that?
Okay. Anybody, I'll let you know when the meeting is. If somebody wants to make it from the board, Vince will let me know and I will pass that on. Early trades pathway, you know, we just saw slides about MECO. So some people are like, what are you doing with MECO? My hope is, Chris and I presented to BOSI's leadership about an early trades pathway. Our thought is, we, we lose a lot of scholars long before they ever have a chance to go to, say, career tech ed in eleventh grade. The kids that we're losing, who some of these chronic absentee kids are, kids that just disengage from their traditional classroom setting. And if we thought that if we created a trades pathway, say, for eighth, ninth, tenth graders, and maybe housed it at MECO, made it a BOSI's program to get kids involved in a hands-on, you know, the trade. I, I thought the trades was prudent because it's a place where kids can learn, do, be physical, use their hands, create. And it's also a no mystery that the trades is a grain field. The people working in HVAC, plumbing, electrical, you name it, concrete, they're all aging out. There's, Mike Rowe spoke to Congress, the guy from Dirty Jobs spoke to Congress and said this is a national crisis. The grain of the, of the construction fields and the, and the, the trades in general. So I think we all know that if a person is hardworking, shows up on time, is a good person with integrity and they have a know-how in the trades, they can make a great life for themselves and support a family. So we're going to, Jay DeTragley is heading up to committee. There's, it seems to be a lot of interest in our region. I would love to, to see this come to fruition. It wouldn't be in September twenty-four. It would be September twenty-five if it gets us off the ground. And I think MECO would be a wonderful location for such a program. Stay tuned on that and I'll turn it over to Chris for conference day agenda.
Passed out a draft of our agenda for March eighteenth. Bernard Callender and I have been working on this for the past few weeks, probably for more time than either of us care to admit. But I think it's going to be a very informative and fruitful day for our faculty and staff and administration. A wide range of focuses that you'll see, anything from starting the day with a full group presentation in the auditorium upstairs for artificial intelligence and the use of that in our classrooms. And beyond that, certainly a lot of CKLA work at the elementary schools. We'll be focusing on the what I need portion of each elementary day, both a math and reading focus there. We'll also focus on the power of relationships and the need for student engagement for all of our scholars in grades pre-K through twelve for that matter. So that's something we're really looking forward to presenting to our aides and TAs who work closely with our students in, in all buildings. And last but not least, there'll be some trauma care training to our buildings and grounds and custodial staff. Any questions on our draft agenda for the eighteenth? We hope to finalize that by early next week and distribute that to faculty and staff. And we'll sign up via frontline, our professional development platform. So it's going to be a great day. Thanks to Bernard for. Thanks to Bernadette for her efforts.
The last thing in my report, Vince, pretty happy that we don't think we're going to lose our March conference day to a snow day this year, considering we have three in the bank. The weather looks pretty good for the foreseeable future. So minus some blizzard, ten feet this year, Nevada's are getting, we should be fine having our conference day. Just for people who are listening, the union's aware of this. I don't know if they put it out to their members yet, but, so we have three snow days left and we do not think we're going to use them. We hope we're not. So per contract with the GTA, the way that they will be given back are as follows. Assuming that we come into April break or spring break with the three days, the first day off will be Thursday, March twenty-eighth. That's the front end of the spring break. So Thursday, March twenty-eighth would be a vacation day rather than Friday, the twenty-ninth. And if we still have two days remaining, the Monday after April break, which is Monday, April eighth, would be added to that vacation. So that would be a pretty long vacation. The third day would be added to Memorial Day. If we do not use any of our current snow days, we would have two days added to April break and then one day added to Memorial Day, which would be Friday, May twenty-fourth. I think the twenty-seventh, Monday, the twenty-seventh is actually Memorial Day, so that would be a four-day weekend. The reason why, some people are like, why don't you add them all to May and make that a nice longer, the weather's better. It's also closer to Regents exams. There's high school Regents exams like within a week and a half of that May date. So, and it's also embedded in the GTA contract that it would be added to the April break. I hope that we come in with all three days because, you know, I'm a little leery having an early April vacation this year. The fact that it is March twenty-eighth, that's pretty early. So I think for the most part, we'll be safe. There are freak storms that come up that could knock us out of school in a day in April. But assuming we don't come back until April ninth, you're already almost into mid-April. And if we still have that one day, that if we did have a freak storm, we would lose the day that would be earmarked for Memorial Day. So I think we've got a pretty good plan in place. Any questions about that? All right, we'll be letting the staff know and the community as soon as possible for those who wish to plan accordingly. That concludes my report. I do have an executive session topic, staff and negotiations. Personnel and negotiations. Any questions? Next item is student board member report. Pressure's on.
So it's kind of short, just two things. Upcoming is are going to be our Spirit Week and our pep rally. Now, the Student Government Association is always looking for ways to participate, for us to get more participation within this and everything and in hopes of increasing the attendance. This week, this year, we're thinking about doing a new thing called Rochambeau. I don't know if anybody's heard of it or seen of it on TikTok. We don't know if it'll be like a week or if it'll just be the day of the pep rally, but each student will get like a Mardi Gras bead necklace. And then they would have to go up to a student, do a rock paper scissors shoe competition. And then whoever wins would get the person's necklace that lost. And then at the pep rally, whoever has the most necklaces would go down to the gym, like the gym floor, and go in like a last competition to see who'd win. We don't know what the prize will be yet, but we're hoping that it increases attendance and participation within the school.
Sounds fun.
Any questions on that?
Where are you getting beads?
SGA is going to order them. We have like funds from other stuff. And then second, last thing is the National Honor Society is doing a blood drive. And I'm president of National Honor Society, so I feel like I have to get it out there so we can get our people to sign up for it. We need at least, I believe, thirty-two people to sign up for donations and I think we're about halfway there. It's March nineteenth, eight AM to twelve PM in the gym. So just go to redcrossblood.org and choose Glover'sville High School.
All right, any questions? All right, thanks. Next is recommended action. We have items seven point zero one through sixteen point one seven. Anyone need anything pulled or any questions or comments on any of those? Motion to approve all those items by Kevin, seconded by Kelly. All in favor on those? And motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and contract items. Motion by Vinnie, seconded by Ed. All in favor? Thank you. There'll be no action taken afterwards.